Good evening. We call this meeting of Fairfield County Council to order Monday, November 26, 2018 at 6:00 PM. First item is the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion? Motion has been made and properly seconded that the agenda be approved as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? By vote of seven to zero, the agenda is approved as presented. We're now down to the invocation. Councilmember Robinson.
Let us bow our heads in prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to make another day's journey. Thank you for allowing us to have another council meeting. We ask that you bless the decisions we've made and bless the decisions we're in process of making. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. We're now down to the approval of minutes. We've got the minutes from our last regular meeting, November 12, 2018, to approve. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion has been made and properly seconded to approve November 12, 2018, regular meeting minutes as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? By vote of seven to zero, those minutes are approved. No public presentations for tonight. First public comment session. Mrs. Davis?
We have two who wish to speak tonight. First, Ms. Kathy Falk, speaking on the animal ordinance.
Whoops. It's been a long time since I stood up here. Good evening, County Council. My name is Kathy Falk. I'm a resident of Fairfield County, and I am the Community Outreach Director of Hoof and Paw. First of all, tonight, I would like to say thank you very, very much on behalf of all of the Hoof and Paw members. Updating this animal ordinance is, as you know, long overdue and something that we've been working towards for many years now. We are hopeful and we are very excited that this ordinance may go through. So, thank you so much. It will help improve the quality of lives of animals so much that are living in Fairfield County, and it will help animal control and law enforcement do their jobs. Fairfield County has already taken great strides by becoming a no-kill county, great strides forward by becoming a no-kill county. This is something to be so proud of. As an organization, Hoof and Paw supports this ordinance. Having said that, we do want to be clear about one thing. Our views on tethering have not changed. We believe that it is inhumane for a dog to live its life at the end of a tether. However, this proposed ordinance gives some much-needed guidelines, and we feel that it is a very good start, and it's a start. We would like to add that in regards to the tethering, that we do something in there that outlaws swing chains, that that is a big problem and could be dangerous. We are hopeful that in the future Fairfield County would follow suit with what many other counties in South Carolina are already doing, which is to either have a no-tether ordinance or a very strict time limitation. But as I said, we're very pleased about this beginning, and we support it very, very much. Regarding the fine limitation in the ordinance, I would like to ask council if there is a reason that the maximum fine is at $500. As stated in the Voice newspaper, over the past several weeks, there have been many wonderful articles, and many studies have shown that have support that weak charges and weak fines or punishments are a serious problem and send the wrong message. So, we'd really like you to look at that and see what you think about that, and really look at the possibility of increasing that fine to a $1,000 fine, not a $500 fine.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. This thing doesn't want to stay on there. Thank y'all.
Next, Mr. Randy Bright, speaking on the animal ordinance.
Kind of slippery, isn't it?
Know what you're doing.
Yeah. Randy Bright, District One, Ridgeway. Great presentation by Kathy. I'm not going to cover all the ground that she did. She hit a lot of the high points that I wanted to hit, so I'd like to remind all of you, the animal ordinance is, again, a great first step by doing the right thing. Doing the right thing, not only by animals, but by people. And all of you are keenly aware, I'm sure, that animal abuse and animal neglect often, too often, go hand-in-hand with human abuse and human neglect. Something like 72% of the animal abuse cases are also a harbinger of domestic abuse. And of course, we all know domestic abuse in the Midlands, South Carolina, in the United States, in the world, is a terrible problem. So, keep this in mind. Because remember, as Kathy said, this is just a start. Let's see how it goes, and then let's keep it, don't just think, oh, we've got it done. Let's keep reviewing our rules and ordinances to ensure that we maintain and continue to improve our animal care. And then, in that same aspect, we've talked a lot about blight. Well, quite frankly, our history of animal abuse is a blight on our county. It is a hindrance to our economic development. It's not the hindrance, it's not a main hindrance, but it is a hindrance. It is an eyesore to our county. And you're addressing so many things: human care, animal care, and of course, our very economic development. Also, I would urge you to ensure, and I agree about raising the fines, that sends a message, a very clear message, particularly for repeat offenders. But also, I would work with our local solicitor, who seems to be quite lax in ensuring that our laws are fully enforced within the context of the law and within the context of the penalties available. And I don't know why, but it seems like, you know, a penalty, for example, for abuse, for making someone work at their church, that really doesn't seem to be a deterrent or justice. And there are other examples in that. So, let's keep our eye on this ball. It's not behind us because we still have a ways to go, but it is an excellent step, and I applaud this group for making that first step. But I would also look at these fines. Let's be sure the fines are deterrents, and that they send a message that we are serious about animal abuse. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes Segment One.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Davis. We have no public hearings tonight. We're now down to ordinances, resolutions, and orders. Item A is a second reading on Ordinance Number 714. This is an ordinance to amend Ordinance Number 535 to establish the rules and regulations pertaining to animal control in Fairfield County and revise Chapter Four Animals of the Code of Ordinances, Fairfield County, South Carolina. Do we have a motion?
Seconded.
Motion has been made and properly seconded to provide second reading to Ordinance Number 714. Do we have any discussion? Mr. Roof?
I agree with one spoke that we should look into maybe increasing the fines.
On that point, there was a legal concern. If we could ask our county attorney, Mr. Morgan, to please give us some of that information so we can consider.
Excuse me, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of council. I understand that there is some concern about the raising the fine level from $500 to $1,000, but South Carolina law was clear about the penalties and the jurisdiction that the magistrate court has. South Carolina Code annotated 22-3-550, subsection A, is the one that limits the amount of fines that a magistrate court offense can issue up to $500. Now, we'll note that the ordinance as drafted includes a provision that each day's violation constitutes a penalty that could be fined up to $500. So, there are provisions inside of it that you could have a continuing day's violation where you can multiply that penalty by the fine of up to $500. But for any one particular fine, that limit, jurisdictional limit, is $500.
And Mr. Morgan, you and I have discussed this, but can you explain a little bit about why we have to keep it in magistrate's court, the county perspective?
Yes, sir, certainly. What happens is, is that the animal ordinance that's provided for in South Carolina Code of Laws, which is Title 47, allows for the county pursuant to its powers under the Home Rule Act to provide for violations of these animal ordinances, but they must be heard in the magistrate court level, except for the new law, excuse me, that was passed with regards to animal cruelty. And that is a different, it's a state provision. Those are crimes that have to be initiated and prosecuted by the solicitor's office here in Fairfield County. And those crimes, depending upon the severity level, do allow for a felony type of prosecution. But otherwise, a county ordinance needs to be a misdemeanor, and it needs to be in magistrate's court.
So, in a nutshell, the state restricts counties with what type violations we can put, or penalties that we can put on animal control ordinances. The highest we can go is magistrate's court, and the highest magistrate's court can go is $500.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that magistrate's court? Mine was that particular fine on animal ordinance? Because they handle it with what?
The jurisdictional limit in a civil matter is also restricted to $7,500, but that is civil. For criminal penalties such as the animal ordinance or anything of its ilk, the fine is $500.
Right. Anyone else? Mr. Roof?
Then I guess we need to encourage our solicitor to prosecute these cases to the full extent of the law then, instead of dropping them.
Right. Well, in my mind, if there's a state provision or law that addresses something that we've addressed, it should be charged under the state provision, because there can be higher penalties under the state provision. And then, in cases in which state law doesn't address things that we think need to be addressed, we need to push state legislators to draft legislation to that effect. Anyone else? All right. I would like to make sure that we take care of the swing chains in the ordinance, so if we can have some changes made to that effect between now and the next meeting, I think that would be a good thing. Anyone else? All right. At this time, we'll take a vote. Again, the motion's been made and properly seconded to provide second reading to Ordinance Number 714. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? By vote of seven to zero, second reading has been given to Ordinance Number 714. We're now down to Item B. First reading by title only of Ordinance Number 715. This is an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a lease agreement between Fairfield County and Palmetto Health and other related matters. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion has been made and properly seconded to provide first reading to Ordinance 715. No discussion since it's first reading. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? By vote of seven to zero, first reading is provided to Ordinance Number 715. We're now down to Board and Commission Minutes. We have three for tonight. We'll approve these together unless there are questions about individual minutes. But those, Chamber of Commerce, Library Board, Disabilities and Special Needs. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion has been made and properly seconded that council approve the minutes as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? By vote of seven to zero, those minutes are approved. Board and Commission Appointments. Item A is Behavioral Health Services. Reappointment of Janita C. Gaston, District Seven. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion's been made and properly seconded to provide the reappointment. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? By vote of seven to zero, that reappointment is made. Item B, Planning Commission. This is appointment of Jana K. Childers from District Seven. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion's been made and properly seconded to appoint Jana K. Childers to the Planning Commission for District Seven. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? By vote of seven to zero, that appointment is made. Item C, I didn't realize how many of these we had. Disabilities and Special Needs Board. Reappointment of Edwina Goodman, District Six. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion has been made and properly seconded to provide the reappointment. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? By vote of seven to zero, that reappointment is provided. Item D, Disabilities and Special Needs Board. Reappointment of Carol Martig, District Four. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? By vote of seven to zero, that reappointment is given. Item E is Council on Aging. Reappointment of Barbara Dove from District Two. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? By vote of seven to zero, that reappointment is made. We have no old business, no new business tonight. We're now down to the County Administrator's Report. Mr. Taylor?
Yes. The first item I have to present to council and to the public is Dr. Mark E. Schaefer. We have a presentation to be given by him on the John A. Martin Primary Healthcare. As council is aware and the public also, the county currently owns that building. We recently took ownership of it, and we have a presentation to be given by Dr. Schaefer tonight.
Thank you. Thank you all so much for having me, for your time. Really appreciate the invitation from Councilwoman Gornes, who's part of our board, for coming up here and letting me talk for just a few moments. This is not meant to be propaganda for our office. It's just meant to make sure you know what you bought and what we do. So, we can go to the next slide here. So, our office here, we're a family medicine office, full spectrum. I have not been here since 1992, but Dr. McAmory has, and also, Dr. Sandy Karaman, our Research and Education Director, is here with me today. As far as I know, we're the only OB provider in the county. Been doing that here for a long, long time. Do our deliveries down at Richland. We're operated kind of uniquely by a small board of nine members, and most of the doctors actually come from downtown, from USC Palmetto Health. That's who I'm employed by through a management contract. Next slide here. The role of our office is not just to come up here and take care of patients. That's the main thing that we do, is to take care of patients, and is to promote education, not just of the community, but of hopefully, future rural health providers. So, our big, big passion is to train medical students, to train residents, to train public health students, to train nursing students, all sorts of folks. We have pharmacy, social work. We all come up from the USC programs and rotations with us, and it's a really rewarding experience. The one goal of our office has been to be a research center for primary care, for rural health, not where, you know, stick people with different drugs, but we research how do you best counsel people about obesity? How do you best deliver healthcare in a rural, low-resource setting? That's why we've been here for the past 20 or so years. And our governance, just to make sure all clear, even though I am employed by USC School of Medicine, our office is not owned by the School of Medicine or Palmetto Health. We're an independent agency. We're owned by a little board, of which Councilwoman Gornes is a member now, which appreciate her service on that board. And then, the board contracts with USC for management services, including myself as medical director, and several of our providers.
Great.
We were started way back in 1991. The building that we're in now was mostly financed by fairly large grants, about $2 million worth of grants, back in the early 90s. The building's been kind of geared exactly for this purpose. There's a room just dedicated to a library and to education for students. There's a large conference room in there where we do group classes with our patients. It's really pretty amazing. We like it there, and we thank you for helping and staying. Here's a flashback picture. That's Dr. Charles McAmory, who you all probably know better than I do, back in the early 90s with the first batch of medical students and social work students and other folks. Just to give an idea of the amount of people we train, since we've opened, we've been a training site for 1,300 different students. That's not just doctors, that's medical students, residents, social work, nursing, public health, all sorts of folks. And I meet these people all over. So, I did residency training at Palmetto Health, and not infrequently, I'd meet a earner, some throat doctor, or surgeon, or someone else who said, oh, yeah, I remember Dr. McAmory going up there and working with those, that great population up in Wentzboro. So, we're a real legit site for a lot of people who are practicing all across the state, all across the country now. Right now, we are at 2.5 providers, 2.5 FTE. It's myself, half-time. Half-time, I'm downtown at Richland. Dr. McAmory is here full-time, and then Ashley Sigani, our nurse practitioner, is here full-time. Over the average year, just to give you an idea, we see about 10,000 visits a year is usually our rough average. That's ballpark 5,000 unique patients. As you know, pregnant women come to the doctor a lot, and babies come to the doctor a lot. So, they're usually frequent with us. This past year, we were proud to receive a status of a Patient Center Medical Home, which was a big quality regulatory body that gave us recognition this past year. We were very excited to finally get that. We do about 80 new pregnant visits per year, which is, from my estimation, is about a third of the pregnancies in the county pass through our office. So, some are going north, some are going west, some are going south, but a bunch do start in our office, and some we do have to refer elsewhere. Thank you. Here's our faces. I'm sure everyone knows the one on the left. If you've been in Wentzboro, he's been here for, again, 25 years plus. I'm the new kid. I've only been here about three or four, still getting settled. And then, Ashley Sigani's been with us for the past two years as a nurse practitioner, doing a great job. Thank you. This is a slide I wanted to focus on, just to make sure everyone's aware of the scope of our practices. So, as full-spectrum primary care doctors, we, of course, take care of womb-to-tomb, so we take care of the baby from conception until you're 105, is my oldest patient now, which is pretty rewarding. We do small cutting-and-paste procedures, so taking off skin tags, taking out little growths, lanceine boils, et cetera. We'll do colposcopy and other basic gyn procedures. I just recently got my licensure for Suboxone therapy. That's one of the big hot topics we're trying to take care of in the county. So, we're not advertising dramatically now, but I have about four or five patients on Suboxone, and that's been another important piece of our practice. Dental varnish, one of our big goals has been to unify the gap between dental care and primary care. So, we started applying dental varnish on our pediatric patients up to age five until they find a dentist. We encourage them to get the dentist, but if they haven't found one yet, we'll take care of that basic preventative service. We have a weight loss program we're starting up now. We have a doctoral student in public health. Help me coordinate that, make sure it's evidence-based and effective, and of course, do family planning. And I have a particular interest in natural family planning that I counsel people on. A lot of folks don't like hormones, but that's a quicker view of what we do. Outside of our office, because we're part of the community, this is just to remind you of that. This is our Right Way to Health Trail, the grand opening back in 2004. If you've noticed the patch of gravel, it's about one-fifth a mile outside our office, a great place to get exercise. We appreciate the master gardeners that tend the garden around the area, but every morning I drive up, there's someone walking that trail, which is a really satisfying thing to see. Besides the trail, the next slide, I won't read through it. It's just a quick flash of some of the agencies we're involved with outside of the office. In addition to these, we have other grants and research projects to work on with different primary care coordinators throughout the state, throughout the region. That's all the real context slides there. But I just want to make sure that you all knew that we're here, that we're working to move forward. The one last piece here, this is very exciting to me personally. As a graduate of our training program at Palmetto Health, but we just got approval to expand our training program to place a resident up here as their main station. So, in addition to the three main finished training providers that are going to be now a resident, he'll be up here, which we hope is going to be a big boost to getting, again, encouraging rural practice within the state. So, thank you again for all the time and support, and we appreciate you being our landlord, and let us know any way we can help you help the county. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone?
No, just to comment and compliment, and thank you so much for taking out of your time, coming to share with us. I was just excited when I was a part of the board, was asked to be a part of the board, and when I realized the awesome work that they are doing for Fairfield County. And I know so many citizens don't know what's available to them, so I wanted him to come and share it with you, and we're going to start doing some publications and get some flyers out so more people, especially in the western area, will know all that's available. But they do an awesome job. Dr. Schaefer just has a mind to always increase and better, and they're doing it here in Fairfield County. So, thank you so much. I appreciate you and your team. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we do have new brochures. They've been on your advice, so we'll have them over here if you need.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just say as well, real quickly, thank you. I didn't know that much was going on over there, so that's good to know. Fantastic.
That's just a little bit.
Good.
And I will also add, the staff, we have met, we've had our maintenance staff meet with their maintenance staff, so when something goes wrong, they know who to call. So, this is a very smooth transition. We won't have any problems as far as the maintenance of the building itself.
Yeah, it's incredibly helpful.
Thank you. Next up, we have Ms. Terri Vickers. She's our current Fairfield County Chamber President, and as everyone knows, she's been trying to retire for a while. And she's here tonight to introduce her replacement, Mr. Gene F. Stevens. He is our incoming president.
Good evening, council. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I'll be very brief. I want to say thank you. I have thoroughly enjoyed working with the council, this council, previous councils. I'll miss you, and I know great things are on the horizon for you. I am excited to introduce to you Gene Franklin Stevens Jr., and he's originally from Neeces, but he's been in Fairfield County since 2011 with the school district. So, I'm going to apologize for him. We had him out Saturday and Sunday in the terrible weather. So, his throat's a little scratchy, and so you may have to turn up your hearing just a little bit. Gene Stevens.
Good evening. Thank you. I'd like to again apologize for my voice. I also just came from basketball practice, which I helped with some. Like Ms. Terri said, my name is Gene Stevens. I have a marketing degree from Clemson University. I've been in Fairfield for almost eight years now, working with the school district in a lot of different capacities, from coaching, also media specialist. Wore a lot of hats, so. With the school district, sorry. I just want to say I'm so excited for this opportunity. When it came up, it just, it kind of, everything happened so fast, and I'm so excited about the potential that Fairfield County has. You know, I tell people all the time that aren't from here, they don't realize how awesome this county is, and I want to, I want people to know, you know, people from around the area, different places, to know the great people that we have here in Fairfield County, the, just the great services that we have, the businesses that we have. I want people to know that you don't have to leave Fairfield County to get what you need. Everything can be provided for, and we have some great ideas. We have a great team at the Chamber of Commerce. My last day at the school district will be on Wednesday, and then I'll be full go on Thursday. And I'm excited. I'm looking forward to working with all of you and everyone in the community and representing you, and I'm excited for this opportunity. And I just want to say thank you to Ms. Terri. She has been phenomenal. You know, we've talked, spent some time together. Everything's happened so fast that we haven't had a lot of time to spend together, but we've been able to sit down and, you know, she told me yesterday, she's like, it's crazy how similar our backgrounds are. You know, we have this age gap there, but we're so similar in our upbringing. It's not a big one. It's not a big one.
I hope that was verbatim.
But I just want to, I just want to thank her for everything she's done in making this transition smooth, and I'm so excited about representing the people of Fairfield County. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone on council? Mr. Pauley?
I just want to tell Ms. Vickers, great job, and congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I was going to say, between this guy and Dylan, we'll be communicating with Mars and have people coming here from everywhere. I mean, this guy is a dynamo, so we're excited.
And want to say to both of you, Ms. Terri, thank you so much, and to Gene, thank you so much, and you all made the transition spectacular yesterday in lights. That's it, so thank you. Looking forward to working with you.
One second. I wanted to thank you. Terri served for a long time on the chamber, retired. Then we had to bring her back, kind of bail them out, and she did. And so, thank you for all you've done, and look forward to you taking over now and just continue the good work, and appreciate it. And, yeah, go Tigers, too.
Oh, yeah.
Save the best for last. Thank you.
I had never had a call on him before.
Next, I have an item being forwarded by the Finance Committee to full council with a recommendation of approving. This is an item of replacing nine air-condition units, or HVAC units for the DSS building. We were known for some time that these building, these units on this building needed replacing. We did budget this. We had a total of $200,000 in this year's budget to go toward the replacement of HVAC units. Nine are being replaced here. They're train units. We're trying to stay consistent with the unit we use for maintenance purposes. Keeps it easier on our crews and cheaper, too. On this particular replacement, we had five bids. They ranged from $130,00714 to $72,238. The lobe of the five bids was cud, heating, and air. We also did look, this is one of the first times that our local preference came into play. Unfortunately, it still did not fall within that threshold of the local preference, so we are recommending that cud, heating, and air be awarded this bid of $72,238. we are recommending that CUD, Heating and Air be awarded this bid of $72,238 to replace these nine units at DSS.
All right, council, do we have a motion?
No move, Ms. Chairman.
Motion has been made and properly seconded to approve the request to replace the units. Also like to state that Administration Finance Committee recommended approval on that. Any discussion? Mr. Paulie?
Mr. Taylor, is the CUD, are they going to do like any preventive maintenance for a year on the, on the units?
I will ask Ms. Pickett to come and I'm not sure, we have an in-house crew to do a lot of that. I don't know what type of warranty. We typically do have one. Again, I'll let Ms. Pickett comment.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you. Of course, there will be warranty provided by CUD, that's in our contract agreement when we do maintenance and of course, there's always a year warranty on it, but they do provide. Honestly, I'm not going to sit here and tell you offhand, I know what's, I don't know everything in my BEA document right now because I did not look up the warranty part of it, but it is in there. We will address that. If you really need to know, I can go back to my office and find out right now, but warranty's always a part of it.
Okay.
Yes.
As far as ongoing maintenance, we do a lot of that in-house.
Ongoing maintenance after the, their contract has ran out for that, yes. County maintenance take care of all the maintenance.
All right. Anyone else?
You're welcome.
All right, we've had a motion been made and properly seconded. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? By vote of seven to zero, that request is approved. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, another very similar item we have being forwarded from the Finance Committee and being recommended by the Finance Committee is the replacement of the HVAC units at the airport, recreation centers, library and judicial center. On this one, we had three bids. They ranged from $141,000 of a high to $83,429 of a low. Again, this is under budget. We had $200,000 total and this with the others still below budget. But we are recommending the low bid on this of CUD, Heating and Air also. Again, we looked at local preference and it did not fall within that threshold, so we're recommending the low bid of $83,429.
All right, thank you, Mr. Taylor. We have a motion?
No move, Ms. Chairman.
Motion has been made and properly seconded to approve the request. Administration Finance Committee recommended approval as well. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Those opposed? By vote of seven to zero, the request is approved. We have no clerk of council's report for tonight. We're down to second public comment session. Mrs. Davis?
Three speakers for tonight. Jackie Workman speaking on congratulations.
I'm just watching the clock, but anyway, I want to say good evening.
Good evening.
I wasn't here at the last council meeting because I was sick, but I was thinking about you all. And the reason I'm here tonight, I'm going to be nice. I would just like to say congratulations to the newly elected officials, to County Council, Moses Bell, Clarence Gilbert, am I missing someone? Those two. And also, I look forward to working with you to move this county forward. And to the chairman, I have to say this, I don't know if you all are going to do anything on his behalf, but he's a young man that I started not liking, we got into it, but as time moved on, he have proved himself. He have shown me that he's extraordinary, not ordinary. He always prepares himself for these meetings. You can tell that the young man studies to show hisself a proof, just like the Bible says. And I wish you Godspeed and I am so serious about this, Chairman Smith, you truly have shown outstanding leadership and everybody can agree to that. And again, I just want to say on behalf of many citizens, we wish you success in your future endeavors and you're going to do good and you're going to go far. Thank you.
Next, Ms. Yvette Howard speaking on Mount Zion.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, County Council members and employees. I'm Yvette Howard, a resident of District 7. I'm here this evening speaking in reference to Mount Zion and the Fairfield County Government Complex Plan. And I have three statements to make about that. Number one, the proposed cost of the project keeps increasing. Number two, it is interesting that the county will be using a corporation that is already in place and used earlier by a prior council for a project objected to by this council. And number three, putting up a stone or a plaque on the grounds with the Confederate stature will not appease the people who are in opposition to the stature. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Randy Bright speaking on economy.
Randy Bright, Ridgeway, District 1. I have a special announcement for everybody. A congratulatory announcement. All of you have heard me wail a bit about unemployment over the past couple of years. Well, guess which county led the state in unemployment rate improvement for this past year ending in September? Fairfield County. 39% improvement in the unemployment rate. Year ago in September, we were at 8.9. Now we're at 5.4 and we've come off the bottom. That's, that's a great job. And we've got a little more momentum with tonight's agenda. Lot of good things coming up. I would also add, to keep this momentum going, something we've talked about before, but I'm going to keep painting the fence on this. I think everyone agrees, we've got two major impediments to our progress forward. One is infrastructure, i.e. water sewer. The other, of course, is blight. Water sewer, again, I'm going to state it and keep stating it. Do you realize if we would adopted this proposal five years ago of raising penny sales tax by a penny, how much we would have raised to put towards our water sewer? $10 million. We would already have $10 million, over $10 million based upon the collections that we've made over this past year on a penny. That's a lot of money towards our water and sewer. And sometimes you've got to look at things like that because there is a lot of money that's going to have to go into it, but when you think that you could get $2 million a year and outsiders will pay a large part of that, it's well worth the investment. Now, we've got to have plans. You just can't do a penny sales tax and be like Richland County, not have any idea where it's going to go. There's plenty of plans on the books. We've got reams of plans sitting on the shelf for Fairfield County and almost all of them, at least in large part, deal with water and sewer infrastructure. So get a plan, get a tax, raise the money and let's move forward. And again, I remind you, continue on our delegation, working on our delegation to get that $25 million that the state promised us for the industrial park. Also on blight, let's just get tough with people who are violating codes. If, if a developer is in arrears on the codes, don't issue them another permit. If they have another project under works, don't turn on their water and heat. Get tough with them. Don't let them abuse this county and don't let them continue with the blight of this county. Got more to say on that later, but my time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes segment two.
Thank you. We're now down to council time. Any councilwoman say anything? Mr. Douglas?
Well, the speaker tonight that complains about her time, I'll have to say that I had, I agree with everything she said.
Anyone else? We're going to go out on that note?
I want to say again to Dr. Schaefer, thank you so much for coming and sharing with us. Also want to again say to Ms. Teri Vickers, the chamber team, the parade last night, or yesterday evening was just amazing. Also the one on Saturday, I had the privilege of being in both, participating in both, the alumni parade. It was just amazing. The only way we can top that is that the alumni come in jointly with the chamber and we just do one great, big, awesome Fairfield County Christmas parade and do what the lights, I loved the part about the lights yesterday evening when we came to the street and the lights were on, so many people out, families out, babies out bundled up and it was just, it just put you in the spirit. And so to have, and I also thought in that same realm, that we had a young generation, Fairfield Central High Band was just off the chain. We have a young generation, but the alumni is part of the past generation, but they have children, grandchildren in that. And for all to participate in the same function would just be an awesome thing for Fairfield County. So I'd like to see us kind of work toward that and hopefully next year, we can do even greater, bigger and greater things. And to all of our agencies, just want to give a shout out, thank you. Sometimes people do things and they go unnoticed, but I want you to know that I realize that you're there. I thank you so much, everybody, for what you're doing, our citizens for your support. Thank you so much for all that you do.
Thank you.